Okay, good night beloved and welcome to tonight's Bible study of Luke chapters twenty-one through twenty-four. We're looking forward to a wonderful study. So without further further ado. And again, I do apologize for the late start. Without further further ado, brother Lindy, can you please? Open us up in prayer?
Okay, just spare me one moment. Just close this door real quick. Okay, let's all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, in this journey, we want to learn more of you. And we come to you humbly and thirst for reconciliation. And we want every everyone here who's participating to have a deep understanding of who you are and your will. We are thankful for your son. And we're thankful for him interceding for us, redeeming us. So we can have a reconciled relationship with you. He's the way. And he's the truth and the life. And without him, none of us could make it home. But thankfully, he rose from the dead. And he and we rose with him. So bless every individual here who's participating. And let them have a comfortable reassurance that you truly love them. So we say this in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. They are baby brother. Okay, beloved. Once again, tonight's study will cover Luke chapters twenty-one through twenty-four. Beloved, as we're making our way to Jerusalem with our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, to his crucifixion, of which we're going to cover this evening, there are a few stops that he makes along the way. And we will observe with our Lord at the temple and how he observes the those who are putting money into the treasury box, the widows might as well as those who are wealthy. Our Lord also foretells of destruction of the temple, which is a foreshadow of the destruction of the houses of worship in the future. Listen to First Peter chapter four verse seventeen. First Peter chapter four verse seventeen reads as follows, and if you're able to, if you're not driving, you could read along these scriptures in your Bible. But be rest assured that brother Linden will send these scriptures out to you so you won't miss a beat. First Peter chapter four verse seventeen, for the time has come that judgment must begin at the house of God. And if it first begin at us, what shall the end be of them that obey not the gospel of God? Beloved brethren, please take note that as our Lord foretold of the destruction of the temple, it came to pass in seventy-eight A.D. Please understand that as Peter is foretelling that God's judgment is going to begin at the houses of worship, it will come to be. Believe that beloved brethren, it will come to be. Again, as we're marching with our Lord to his journey to Calvary's cross. It's one of the most, this is what you would call a dichotomy. It's one of the most beautiful, yet one of the most doleful acts in the history of the world. And the reason why I say that is this. Our Lord going to Calvary's cross to die for our sins, that is beautiful. Because all of our sins have been put on him. Now we do not have to face God's wrath. Because our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ took that wrath two thousand years ago on Calvary's cross. That's what makes it beautiful because it provides for us the way of salvation, the way to enter into God's kingdom, whether on paradise, earth, or in heaven. Remember, no man comes unto the Father except through Jesus Christ and his sacrifice on Calvary's cross. The reason why I said it's one of the most doleful because in the history of the annals of time, and when I use the word time, I'm actually misquoting. Because prior to our creation in Genesis chapter one verse one, prior to our creation, there was not such a thing as called time. And the reason why I say that is because in eternity past, there were no clocks, no days, no schedules, no months, no years that they adhere to. So in eternity past, there has never been a separation between Jesus and God. But two thousand years ago on Calvary's cross, there was a separation between Jesus and God. And that separation was because of my sins. Once again, oh yes, he died for the sins of the world, but I personalize it because I don't want anyone to be offended saying, who does Brother Scott think he is? I'm no sinner, so that's why I don't include y'all. Now, if y'all feel you want to include yourself, I'll say this, brother Linden knows he's a sinner. My wife and children, they know that they're sinners. So I know I'm a sinner as well. So again, two thousand years ago, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ took upon himself our sins on Calvary's cross. And because of that, there had to be a separation between God and Jesus. Because Jesus, because God cannot be in the presence of sin. He said while he was on Calvary's cross, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me? And Jesus was forsaken by forsaken by the Father. Because once again, I'm personalizing this, because he took my sins upon him. So that is what makes it one of the most doleful acts in the history of the world. But yet, because of that act, I now have an opportunity for salvation. So beloved brethren, brother Linden, when we get to his segment, he's going to bring us to the crucifixion, the death, the burial, the resurrection, and ascension of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus, Jesus our Christ. So with that in mind, beloved, ain't somebody here tonight going to say hallelujah? I'm waiting. Oh, okay, y'all saying it in your hearts. Well, let me join you vocally. Hallelujah for what has been done for us two thousand years ago. Thank you, Boo Boo. Thank you so much. Okay, so with, oh yes, thank you, sister. Thank you, sister.
Amen. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Absolutely. There you go. There you go. There you go. All right now. Okay. I see I got something started. All right, beloved ones. So with that in mind, we're reviewing Luke chapter twenty-one. And we're looking at verses one through four. And this is the widow's mite. And I entitled this that Jesus takes notice of the poor. The widow's mite, which is also known as a lepton, L-E-P-T-O-N. And it was a Jewish coin that had the smallest and least value of all coins in circulation in Judea during New Testament times. At the time of Mark's writing, it was worth one sixty-fourth of a denarius. Now, denarius was a day's wage for a common worker. So let's get a perspective of that in today's term. That one denarius is equivalent to one eighth of a cent. So in other words, you needed eight leptons or widow's mite to make one penny. You needed eight of these leptons to make one penny. Now, beloved brethren, please understand this. Back in those days, when a widow's mite put her two mites in the collection box, you you gotta understand that that when the when the religious leaders were taking a collection at the end of the day or making account of the collection, you have to stand to reason that they threw those two coppers out. Let's let's just, you know, be on the on the on the on the realms of realism. Those two coins that the widow put in the collection box, they absolutely threw out. That's just like saying, and let's put it in perspective. Kreflo Dollar, now he sends around a collection box, and if he finds four, five, six, seven, maybe twenty pennies, he's gonna throw it out. But beloved, let me tell you this. Here today, August seventeen twenty twenty-four, some two thousand years later, we are still talking about the widow's contribution in that collection box. Now, her contribution has whooped withstood the test of time. We don't know how much those rich folks put into collection box. And Holy Spirit chose not to divulge to us what they did. But the collections, the money, the temple, and all of those rich men, they are all dead. Now, the widow, she's dead as well, but we're still talking about it. We're still speaking of her uh uh putting in everything she had. We're still talking about it here in the twenty-first century. Now, beloved brethren, all of that is being said to help you to understand that when you make contributions to your local church or to your local Christian charity, like there's a ministry that I listen to. It's called TTB.org through the Bible, and I make contributions to that. And brother listen, brother Linden listens to Rabbi Schneider. And he makes contributions to Rabbi Schneider's ministry as well. And just just a side note. The reason why brother Linden and I do such because we find these to be faithful ministries. Let me just put a word of caution. I would not contribute to persons like Kreflo Dollar, TD Jakes, or Goldolstein. And there's a few of them out there that are just nothing but shysters. If you have a faithful church that you're going to, or if you have a faithful ministry that you listen to, I would encourage you to contribute. And again, let me just use mine as an example. TTB.org has been on the air for the past fifty-plus years. I contribute to that because I want that ministry to continue to be on the air until our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ returns. So beloved brethren, I deem that to be a faithful ministry. So that's why I make contributions to it. But beloved brethren, please understand this. If you are in the category that I am in, and that is not wealthy and not rich, and when you make a contribution, one dollar, two dollar, three dollar, four dollar, five dollars, whatever, please do not think that Jesus overlooks your contribution compared to someone putting in, let's say, three or four thousand dollars into the contribution box. Don't reason within yourself, oh, my little contribution of two or three dollars, four dollars, four dollars, fifty dollars, sixty dollars doesn't compare to Bill Gates making a contribution of, say, a hundred thousand dollars to the local church. Beloved, listen to what our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ just gives his words on what he's saying in comparison to the ones who put in from their their big time wallets. Luke twenty-one, one through four, and Jesus looked up and saw the rich casting in their gifts into the treasury. He also saw a poor widow casting in her two mites. And he said of a troop, I say unto you that this poor widow has cast in more than they all. Now, move to the twenty-first century. Jesus is saying, Scott, that's five dollars that you put into TTP.org. You put in more than that rich man who made a seventy-five thousand dollar contribution. That blesses me. Because I'm giving actually from my menial, let me just let me use that term. I won't say poverty. Thank God I'm not in poverty. But I'm giving because I'm a family of six, and I have to make sure that my family is well taken care of. So when I do give, I give at the best level of contribution that I can. The same applies to brother Linden. He's a family of five plus. And many of y'all also out there, y'all are not big time hundred dollar an hour job, six-figure jobs. So whatever y'all give to your local congregation, you're doing it from the bottom of your heart. And like we just read, again, listen to the words of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, because he's directing this statement to y'all. And I'm talking about y'all here on tonight's Bible study. This is our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ speaking directly to you. Verse three, Luke chapter twenty-one. And Jesus said of a troop, I say unto you. And let me just, let me, let me, let me personalize it. Jesus Christ is saying, Linden, Chrissy, Gracia, Scoobert, Nedgy, Scott, Whitney, Kimberly. You, this is Jesus speaking of you. You have cast in more than the rich man when he puts money into the contribution box. So beloved brethren, take heart knowing that your contribution is being seen from heaven's height and being blessed by God. So continue giving as you are once again to a faithful ministry. Because the Lord is looking at it and he's blessing it. Beloved, there are those who vary church attendance. It doesn't cost them nothing. They're giving it to the collection box. That costs them nothing as well. When they come to church, they pull up in their big time fancy car, fancy cars. They dress in fine luxurious clothes. All of this that they do is out of their opulence, out of their abundance, because they can afford to come to church in a Rolls Royce, a Mercedes, a Cadillac, a BMW, a Jaguar. And I'm talking about the latest twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-four BMWs, Mercedes, and so on and so forth. And they step out with their Pierre Cardon and their Prada and their Gucci, and they're wearing diamond gold and pearls and all this other stuff. They're doing it from their opulence. Just share this with you real quick. I was reading in the paper, Ben Affleck had gave Jennifer Lopez, J-Lo, a five hundred thousand dollar, I think, engagement or wedding ring. And everybody was standing to the side, ooh, and ah, and I wish I was J-Lo. To me, I give that a thumbs down. Why? Because Ben Affleck probably has a salary of a couple of million, if not tens of millions. So him buying J-Lo a five hundred thousand dollar wedding ring, that don't impress me. But when you have brothers like Linden, as well as myself, giving our wives an engagement ring or a wedding ring that let's just say courses in the high hundreds or the low thousands, I bless, and let me again, let me let me not pat my own back, I bless Linden. Because I know Linden is doing it from every day, five day a week, blue collar salary. So he's giving his wife a ring that's according to his salary. I'm not impressed by J-Lo's five hundred thousand dollars seventeen carat ring. I'm impressed at brother Linden giving his wife a beautiful gold wedding ring. So beloved brethren, let's keep things in perspective. Jesus Christ is not watching the wealthy man and patting him on the back. Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, he's looking at us poor, blue collar, everyday workers, and he's patting us on the back. So bless the Lord that when you give, you're giving it from your heart. Beloved brethren, when you do this, you're showing to God that your relationship with him does cost you something. Listen to our beautiful brother David, King David, at Second Samuel chapter twenty-four verse twenty-four. You see, David, even as a wealthy king, even as a wealthy king, he was offered a land for free. But listen to David. Listen to our beautiful brother Dave. Second Samuel chapter twenty-four verse twenty-four. And the king, this is David, said unto Aurora, A-R-A-U-N-A-H, no. But I will surely buy it of the at a price. Neither will I offer burnt offerings unto the Lord my God of that which cost me nothing. So David bought the threshing floor and the oxen for fifty shekels of silver. Beloved brethren, please. When you show up to Bible study like you're doing tonight, when you go to church like you do on Sunday, and you go with the best clothing that you have, and it may not be Prada and Gucci and Pierre Cardon, please understand that God is blessing you. I'm sitting here telling y'all right now, if you didn't know it before, you know it now. God blesses you for showing up in your let's just say, go ahead, Boo Boo, nice and loud. Very good question. As as a standard, we meet on Sunday, the majority. Now, there are those that meet on a Saturday night or a Saturday. There were some that meet on Friday. So in answer to your question, we'll just say that the standard meeting for for making church service on Sunday is a recommendation. Do you have to? The answer to that is no. Us having Bible study tonight, this is a form of going to church. Because we're gathered around the person of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. We're studying out the Bible. And there are two or more of us gathered together touching and agreeing on the same thing, and that is in our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Does that answer you, baby? All right. Okay. Thank you for that question. So once again, beloved brethren, please understand that God values what you do put in. Um, I was on my way to work and it was on a Sunday and I was in a dollar van. And there was this young mother, and she had three children with her. She was on her way to church. She was dressed, you know, her and the children were dressed fine. It was on a Sunday. It was Sunday morning. So she was on her way to church service. So again, she had three children with her. When she got into the dollar van, she had to put one child on her lap. Um, because she really couldn't afford, you know, to pay for herself as well as the three children. The dollar van, the drivers will be fair. If you do put the child on your lap, you don't have to pay for the child. You just have to pay for yourself and any of your other guests that occupy the seats. So I said to the ma'am, I said to the young lady, I said, ma'am, let all of your children sit on the seat. And she gave me the look like, you know, I can't afford. I said, I got you. I told her, I got you. The reason why I paid her as well as her children's fare because it blessed me to see this young mother struggling as the widow's mite on a Sunday morning with her children. So I said, the least that I can do, the least I can do in contribution to that is pay for her fare to go to church that Sunday morning. So it blessed me to be able to help her go to church that Sunday because she took out of her time, out of what little she had, to take her children and bless them, I'm sorry, for her and them to bless the Lord. And beloved brethren, as I'm closing this section, I just want to say this passage reminds me of how earnest, faithful, and dedicated my mother was in taking my siblings and I to church on the very, very little that she had. There are those of y'all here in tonight's study that are doing the same thing. Know this, let me please read it again, because I don't want y'all to think this is Brother Scott's lips telling you something that ain't true. Let's hear it from the mouth of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ pertaining to you. Verse three of Luke twenty-one, of a truth I say unto you that these poor Christians has put in more than all they that are rich. Moving on to verse eight, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ warns us of false Christ. Well, beloved, how do you tell the false Christ from the true Lord and Savior Jesus Christ? You do that by testing the spirits. You see that? If you do that to see if they are from God's source. And in that, you're comparing these men's and their teaching and their theology line upon line, precept upon precept. And by the way, precept is a general rule intended to regulate behavior or thought. So are these ones who are proclaiming to bring the word of the Lord Jesus Christ, is they, I mean, sorry, are they in line with what's found written in scripture? And I'm going to steal a line from my baby brother Linden. Are they following the script? And the script is scripture. Beloved brethren, if you find that you have been entangled or you've been in association or attending the church or congregation with someone who has not been lying or who is lying, who is not lining up with biblical principles, and I mean for everything. When brother Linden and I got this Bible started, study started a few years ago, the first thing I said to Linden was this. I said, Linden, how do you view Genesis chapter one verse one through Revelation chapter twenty-two, twenty-one, and all in between? He said, that is my guidebook for life. When he told me that, then I said, brother, it's on. So beloved brethren, Linden and I don't go through the scriptures picking out the juicy parts and looking over the not so juicy parts. We bring it all. Because the scripture says the whole counsel of God, Proverbs chapter thirty, verses five and six, every word, every word of God is pure. Deuteronomy helps us to appreciate. Deuteronomy chapter four verse four, he says, do not add to his word. He said, do not remove from his word. So once again, beloved brethren, the congregation, the church, the pastor, the preacher, the Bible school teacher that you're listening to, if they are not lining up with scripture, you separate yourself from them. Remember, God didn't excuse Adam and Eve because they were deceived from deceived by Satan. God is having, is going to have Satan lined up to be destroyed in hell. God is having Adam and Eve lined up to be destroyed in hell. Remember, God doesn't excuse the deceiver. God doesn't excuse the deceit. So please, beloved, please do not be deceived. Match even line up with brother Linden and I are bringing to you tonight in this Bible study, line up our words with the Bible. And if we come up correct, please continue to attend. And if we come up incorrect, bring it to our attention. And if we refuse to adhere to scripture teachings, get rid of us. Plain, simple, period. Verses twenty through twenty-four, the times of the Gentile and invasion of Jerusalem. Now, these verses take on a dual application in that in seventy A.D. Jerusalem was indeed invaded and it was destroyed. Listen to verses twenty-three and twenty-four for what our Lord says concerning Jerusalem in A.D. seven. Luke twenty-one verses twenty-three and twenty-four, but woe unto them that are with child and to them that give suck in those days. For there shall be great distress in the land and wrath upon this people. And they shall fall by the edge of the sword and shall be led away captive into all nations. And Jerusalem shall be trodden down to the Gentiles until the times of the Gentile be fulfilled. In other scriptures such as Matthew and Mark, they go on even further to say, pray that your flight be not on the Sabbath day, nor in winter, nor when parents have baby children. Now, Lord and Savior Jesus Christ was saying on the Sabbath day because he was respecting the Jews who are adhering to the Sabbath. Once again, as brother Linden so beautifully and so extensively helped us to appreciate that we as Christians, we are not under the Sabbath restrictions. But he was saying that to those Jews who will still adhere to the Sabbath restrictions. He was saying, pray not that the end will not be on what they view as a Sabbath. Because of that, that would be like a snare to them because they won't make any moves on the Sabbath. Now also, he's saying pray that it will not happen to the Now also, he's saying pray that it will not happen during the wintertime because we know how difficult it is to travel during the winter. And also when a child is with baby, I'm, I'm sorry, when a parent is with a, 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 an, a newborn child because it makes travel in that difficult as well. So beloved brethren, again, our Lord is being, um, is warning us. But in his warning, he's taken into consideration that he's saying to you, pray that it won't happen in the wintertime. Pray that it won't happen during the Sabbath and pray that it will not happen as, um, little children. I mean, as mothers have infant children. Now, when our Lord tells us to pray that these things will not occur during this time period, understand that he has witnessed Jerusalem's destruction in times past. He's foretelling it's going to happen in seventy A.D. And he's going even further into the future, even time bey- beyond what we're living in here now, August twenty twenty-four, of when there will be another invasion of Jerusalem. Beloved brethren, the period of the Gentiles began with Babylonians' destruction of Jerusalem in five eighty-six B.C. and the exile of the Jewish people. Israel was no longer an independent nation, but was under the control of Gentile rulers. In Jesus's day, Israel was governed by the Roman Empire and a Roman general would end up destroying the city in A.D. seventies. So this is showing that the two, uh, the Jews are under the Gentile times. Our Lord and Savior was saying that the domination of God's people will be by his enemies until God decides to put it to an end. The period of the Gentiles refers not just to the repeated destruction of Jerusalem, but also to the continuing and mounting persecution of God's people until the end. God is going to tolerate one last invasion of the Gentiles into Jerusalem, which will occur in the future. Listen to Zechariah chapter fourteen, verses two and three. Zechariah chapter fourteen, verses two and three reads as follows. "I will gather all nations against Jerusalem to battle, and the city shall be taken, and the houses rifled, and the women ravished, and half of the city shall go forth unto captivity, and the residue of the people shall not be cut off from the city. Then shall the Lord go forth and fight against those nations as when he fought in the day of battle." So again, understand, beloved brethren, the last invasion of Jerusalem is yet in the future. And when these different Gentile people invade Jerusalem, when that occurs, beloved brethren, know that the end is here. Moving on to verses twenty-five through thirty-one, "The sun will be darkened, the moon will not give off its light." Now, beloved brethren, now while these terms do or can, let me just say they can take on a figurative application. Let me show with, let me share with you, for example, in Genesis chapter thirty-seven, verse nine, Jacob and his wife Rachel were designated or called the sun and the moon. Listen to Genesis chapter thirty-seven, verse nine. This is speaking of Joseph who had a dream and he revealed his dreams to his family. Genesis thirty-seven, verse nine reads, "And he dreamed yet another dream and told it to his brothers and said, behold, I have dreamed a dream more. And behold, the sun and the moon and the eleven stars bowed to me." Now, Revelation chapter twelve, verse one, helps us to get an even sharper picture of what Joseph was talking about way back in Genesis. Chapter thirty-seven, verse nine. Revelation chapter twelve, verse one, listen. "And there appeared a great wonder in heaven, a woman clothed with the sun and the moon under her feet and upon her head a crown of twelve stars." This is a vivid picture of Israel, which is described as the woman. Because if we move further down, we'll see that she delivered a man-child who was ruled, that is verse five, "All nations with a rod of iron." So where did Jesus come from? Jesus came from Mary. Where is Mary from? She's from David. Where is David from? He's from the line of Judah. Where was Judah from? He's from Israel. So again, uh, beloved brethren, this is all figurative picturesque language. Now, I just want to bring to y'all attention two comparisons that has the same tone and meaning. Revelation chapter twelve, verse one says, "Upon her head a crown of twelve stars." Hold that in your mind, hold that in your thinking. Move over to Genesis chapter thirty-seven, verse nine. And listen to what Joseph is saying. The sun and the moon, again, which is his mother and father, and the how many stars? Eleven stars bowed down to me. So a person say, well, wait a minute, Brother Scott. Revelation chapter twelve, verse one says twelve stars, but Genesis chapter thirty-seven, verse nine says eleven stars. Remember, the eleven stars are who? They're Joseph's brother. Who's telling the story at this point is Joseph. When we get to Revelation, Joseph is now included in this transaction. He making the twelve stars. So once again, beloved brethren, these terms, sun, moons, stars, they can take on a figurative application. But when our Lord is speaking of what's to occur in the future, he's speaking of the actual, literal sun and moon. Now, beloved brethren, the sun and the moon did experience some extraordinary, um, 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 applications in times past. Listen to Exodus, chapter ten, verses twenty-two and twenty-three. Once again, we're looking at Exodus, chapter ten, verses twenty-two and twenty-three. Listen. "Moses stretched forth his hand toward heaven, and there was a thick darkness in all the land of Egypt for three days. And they saw not one another, neither rose any from his place for three days. But all the children of Israel had light in their dwellings." Again, beloved brother, this is speaking of the actual sun being darkened for the Egyptians but remaining illuminated for the children of Israel. We also, um, have come to appreciate how the stunts, the sun stood still for Joshua. Now, let me explain to you what I mean by that. A regular day is twenty-four hours long. God had the sun to stay still for Joshua during this battle. So on that particular day, it was twenty-seven hours long instead of being just twenty-four hours long. Brother Brit, uh, Brother Linden has sent me, uh, uh, Micah, chapter three, verses six and seven. So let's turn there, um, briefly, once Say again, Chub Chub? No, 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 I'm not saying, I don't know how long the battle was, but the, but God had caused the sun to make that, to stay up longer. In other words, like right now, it gets dark at eight o'clock. So at seven o'clock, it's still sunlight. So what God did, sun to stay in the sky, um, instead of, you know, how the sun goes around, it goes from New York to China. Um, it's actually not the sun. Well, it is the sun moving, I think. Well, either the sun is moving or the earth is rotating. So in, um, it's, 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 it's daylight at seven o'clock in New York. But let's say another six hours from now, when it's like, um, midnight or one o'clock in the morning, it's dark here in New York, but it's daylight in China. So what God did is he caused the sun to stay in the sky at seven P.M., which gave Joshua light another three to four hours later, which was still daylight at ten o'clock and eleven o'clock at night. That was the time when God actually affected the sun to make it stay light longer. Comprende, Boo Boo? Okay, excellent. We're taking a look at Micah. Um, forgive me. We're taking a look at Micah, chapter three, verses six and seven. Once again, we're looking at Micah, chapter three, verses six and seven. And there it reads, "Therefore night shall be unto you, that you shall have not a vision, and it shall be dark unto you, that you shall not divine, and the sun shall go down over the prophets, and the day shall be dark over them. Then shall the seers be ashamed, and the diviners confound it. Yea, they shall all cover their lips, for there is no answer of God." Thank you, Brother Lynn. Also, we know that when our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ was dying upon the cross at midday, at high midday, God all of a sudden made the world as dark as night. Again, this is God affecting the sun that it was out of, if we want to use the term, that, uh, it was out of its orbit, out of its turn or out of its time on being in, um, a place that was unusual for it to be in. And once again, this is something that we saw occur in Egypt. We just read in Micah and during our Lord's, um, time of death on the cross, he allowed the entire world to go dark at high noon. Verse thirty-two, speaking of generations. Now, beloved brethren, let's get an understanding of when our Lord said, this generation shall not pass until all things be fulfilled. Now, let's get an understanding of first what a generation is. A generation is a usual period of time of all people born and living at about the same time collectively. The meaning of generation is a body of living beings constituting a single step in the line of descent from an ancestor, an era of time, a period or an era of time. Okay, so now, according to what we read in Exodus, when God told Moses that this generation will not, well, let's read it. Let's read it because we're gonna try to get a timeline of how long or what does a generation cover. Now, according to this, a generation can cover a period of forty years. Listen to Deuteronomy, chapter one, verse thirty-five. "Surely there shall not one of these men of this evil generation see that good land, which I swear to give unto your fathers." So accordingly, the men of Moses's day, within a forty-year period, that generation had died out completely, that they did not see the promised land. So we can look at a generation covering a time period of some forty years. Um, let me try to bring that down to more modern terms. I graduated high school in nineteen eighty-four, sixteen, okay, so to this, um, this is twenty twenty-four, so this is forty, this is forty years. Within that forty-year period, and I'm using, um, one of my classmates, um, because I am not as, um, I'm not in line with him. And then I'll explain to you why I'm not in line with him. So one of my classmates, he had a child and he's, his child now has children. So he's a granddad. So from nineteen eighty-four to twenty twenty-four, there was roughly, in his, in his case, three generations because it was him as a father, then his son and, and his grandson. So that's, uh, within that time period, roughly three generations. So again, we could look at generation to expand in a timeframe of, let's say, forty years. Now, that's number forty, which is a very, um, um, a number which is used in scripture as a number for testing men, as a time for testing. Remember, our Lord was in the wilderness for forty days. It also rained forty days and forty nights during Noah's time. And the children of Israel, remember, we just read, some of them died within forty-year period for their bell, uh, for their rebellion. And it was also forty years later, which the promised children of Israel, it took them additional forty years to get into the land of promise. Now, the number forty also carries with it this. It could be considered new life, growth, transformation. It could also represent a change from one task to another. The number forty also can emphasize a time of hardship and trouble such as death, uh, judgment and testing. Now, for example, Moses spent forty years tending to the flocks in deserts, in the desert. David spent time, um, of, um, I can't rec, um, man, I lost my chain of thought. Please forgive me. Let me just focus on Moses. Moses spent forty years in the desert tending flocks. Now, let's bring that down to you and I. We right now, we are tending to Jesus's sheep as found in John, chapter twenty-one, verse sixteen, when our Lord said to Peter, he said, Peter, feed my sheep. Let's, uh, get a quick reading of that. John, chapter twenty-one, verse sixteen. Jesus says to Peter, Simon, son of Jonas, do you love me? And he said, yes, I love you. He said, feed my sheep. So we could favorably compare that forty-year time period that, uh, Moses spent in the desert tending to the flock of his father-in-law as us tending to the Lord's sheep in this figurative, not a literal, but in this figurative forty-year time period. Now, the reason why I brought all of that to our attention, because it's not a generation that you could look at as to say, well, the people from Jesus's day, even if you take it to three generations, those people would have died out. Now, remember, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ said that this generation will see the end of time. Now, what possible generation could he be talking about? The generation of us living in his grace. Remember, we're in the time period of our Lord's grace. Again, let me illustrate. The first generation of mankind was up until Moses's day. Now, remember, everyone with the exception of Moses and his seven family, I'm sorry, Noah. I'm so sorry, Noah. Everyone within that time period, or you can just say that generation, which was from Adam to Noah, with the exception of Noah and his seven family members, that generation all died out. This new generation, which is carried over into our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ coming to the earth, and he being our sacrifice, now we're living in his time period of grace, of mercy and forgiveness. So before our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ returns, the generation that is alive now, which includes you and I and those from our Lord's day, we will be alive, hopefully. Let's just say, and then this, again, let's, let's keep it on a realm of, of, of realism. Well, let's, let me use my aunt. My aunt is ninety-plus years of age because forty years from now, I can still be alive. I'm fifty-nine, so forty years from now, I could still be alive. But forty years from now, my aunt who's ninety-five, she won't be here. But she's still living in the time period of our Lord's grace from two thousand years ago until current. So this generation that we're living in will not pass until we see the coming of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Now, my daughter very well may see it and Linden's little ones and anyone who have little ones here, they very well may see it. But even if not, remember, this generation will be in place until our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ returns. Beloved brethren, moving down to verses thirty-six through, uh, uh, thirty-eight, I just love what Luke wrote. Listen to verses thirty-six through thirty-eight. "Watch ye therefore," this is Luke, chapter twenty-one, "watch ye therefore and pray always that you may be accounted worthy to escape all the things that shall come to pass." that you may be accounted worthy to escape all the things that shall come to pass and to stand before the Son of Man. And in the daytime, when he was teaching in the temple, and at night he went out and abode in the mount that is called the Mount of Olives, verse thirty-eight, and all the people came early in the morning to him in the temple for to hear him." Beloved brethren, when you say to people that you should pray always, some respond, "Man, are you, are you serious? You expect me to pray always?" Now, I don't mean you walk around all day long. Like, take me, for example, I work on a train. I'm not saying that you walk away all, I'm walking around all day long, and instead of me saying, "Next stop, Grand Central Forty-second Street", I get on the, the mic and I say, "Oh, good thanks unto the Lord for your so good amen, amen, amen." No, I'm not talking about that, because that's insanity. But you can always be praying in your heart, but the praying always is have a daily schedule of prayer. Yes, beloved brethren, I'm encouraging you to have a daily, a daily schedule of prayer. Brother Scott, my week is so busy, I can't even have enough time to sleep. Well, pray in your hearts. Set aside some time to pray, in the daytime, in the afternoon, in the evening. Beloved brethren, sometimes when I get off from work in the afternoon, now, my family, we usually have prayer in the evening, anywhere from eight to ten P M. But sometimes when I get off from work at three, four, five o'clock in the afternoon, and I know I'm gonna crash, I'll say, "Family, let's have prayer." And I will pray, and I'll go to sleep, and sometimes I'll wake up, not even till the next day, or ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night. At that point, we've already got our prayer inch for the day. So beloved brethren, etch out time in your day to make room for, yes, this prayer always. Listen to Psalms, listen to David at Psalms thirty-four, verse one. "I will bless the Lord at all times; his praise shall be continually in my mouth." Beloved brethren, David is saying he's blessing the Lord all times. The praise of God is continually in his mouth. Beloved, were y'all aware, listen to me, were y'all aware that there is a specific group of angels in heaven, as we're speaking right now, that all they do continually and forever is bow down before God saying, "Holy, holy," you know what? Let not my lips tell it, let John tell it. Beloved brethren, if you're able to, turn in your Bible to Revelation, chapter four, verse eight. And listen to this specific group of angels, what they do day and night continually forever. Revelation, chapter four, verse eight. "And the four beasts had each of them six wings about him, and they were full of eyes within. And they rest not day and night, saying, 'Holy, holy, holy, Lord God Almighty, which was and is and is to come.'" Beloved brethren, day and night, from eternity past to eternity in the future, there was a segment of angels that all they do is say, "Holy, holy, holy, Lord God Almighty." So beloved brethren, my scripture makes a request of you to pray always. I don't think God is asking too much of us, beloved. I sincerely don't think God is asking too much for us, because look at what he's done. Look at what he's done for us on Calvary's cross two thousand years ago. And beloved brethren, a lot of us were glued and tuned to our TVs watching the Olympics. Now, I caught a glimpse of it, and I was listening to one of the Olympians, and they were saying, "Day and night." For some of them, they were saying, "Twelve to sixteen hours a day." They were preparing to do, um, their cartwheels, their swims, their long runs, their sprints, their jumps, their shot putts. And they were doing this day and day after day after day. They did all of this time for what? A ten-minute performance? But look at the time that they invested in doing this. And I was looking at a clip from Simone Biles, and let me tell you, there was a clip in Yara YouTube, if you can see it as well. She did fifteen flips in one session, and I gotta, I gotta admit, I was impressed. There was a flip she did, and I'm trying, I'm gonna try to describe it verbally. She flipped, wait, she flipped, flipped, flipped backwards, landed on her feet, she wasn't on her feet a millionth of a second before she did a front flip. And I was showing it to my wife, and I said, "That young lady is off the hook." Oh, my gosh. So again, beloved brethren, we are impressed by what these people do day after day in preparation for something that only lasts just a moment. Shouldn't you and I pray to our God continuously? Shouldn't we rise up early in the morning, like I used to see, my mother had a schedule from five in the morning to ten in the morning. Do not call my mother on the phone, you will not be answered by her, because she's in continuous prayer, seeking the face of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Moving on quickly to chapter twenty-two, and just gonna touch a few highlights. Judas, from verses one through six of chapter twenty-two, verses one through six, forty-seven and forty-eight, Judas is the worst person that has ever put two feet on the face of this earth, because Judas actively was seeking to betray our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. But don't think it's gone unnoticed, because listen to what our Lord says about Judas in Mark, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-one. Mark, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-one, reads as follows, "The Son of Man indeed goes away, as is written of him. But woe to that man by whom the Son of Man is betrayed! It was good if he had never been born." Those are some destructive, forget hurtful, those are some destructive words. Why? Because Judas is going to spend eternity. Listen, listen to me. Judas is going to spend eternity. Let me spell it out for you. Forever in hell. It would have been better that Judas' mother and father had not got together that night and conceived him because of this awful betrayal of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Beloved brethren, verse forty-two, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ says, "Father, pass this cup from me." Now, as I was preparing for tonight's study, this hit me like a ton of bricks. And like Brother Lyndon and I say to y'all constantly, we hope that these studies are benefiting y'all as much as it's benefiting us. Now, the reason why this hit me like a ton of bricks, because I was listening to my Lord's plea. He was saying to God, "Father, pass this cup for me." Now, you wanna know what that cup that he was asking to be removed from him? That was a cup of my sins. Again, I'm personalizing it. I'm not including y'all in this transaction. I'm talking about me. He was pleading to have this cup of my sins removed from him. And dare I go out and perform future sins? Dare, tonight, once I finish this Bible study, I go out and commit some sins? I gotta be crazy. Remember, from eternity past, Jesus and God had always been by each other's side. There had been no period of separation or division between them. But because I was born fifty-nine years ago, and from the time I was able to know the difference of right and wrong, up until, up until I committed sins, and my Lord had to take my sins upon his body. Beloved brethren, I'm gonna close my portion of tonight's review by saying this. If you really love Jesus, listen to me, please, please, please. If you really love our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, think about what you're doing or what you're considering doing in the realm of sin, and don't do it. Please. Brother Lyndon.
Okay, everybody. Um, that was a good, uh, refresher. And, uh, worship is, is deep. I think that, um, we as creatures don't understand what worship is, but we know we are who we worship. And each and every day, I'm learning who is in the center of my thoughts. And you often wonder, is God worth being the center of all my thoughts? Of course. And you'll never hear about or experience anyone as genuine as God. And that's why I'm beginning to learn the beauty of worshiping him. Because he's only one of truly, truly clearest people that we, um, invested our time in. For some reason, in this broken, fallen world, relationships fail. There's always unfaithfulness. There's always disappointment. But with God, I, I haven't seen him disappoint anyone who has an intimate relationship with him. Okay, um, I'm gonna go into, um, the last two chapters of Luke, and this is pretty much the climax of God, um, God's mission. Now, Jesus suffered for us, and he gave up his life for his bride. And I know we've probably repeated this, and we've gone over this. Yes, Jesus died. He is our husband in the Old Testament, and, um, he died, and we're no longer bound to that law with all the restrictions, ceremonial, um, observances. And I'm just gonna give you a little preview. You know, they celebrated Preparation Day, and they celebrated, um, they observed the Sabbath day, because, you know, Preparation Day was the day that he died on the cross. And as you can see, if you look keenly, Preparation Day was focusing on the fact that Nicodemus and Joseph prepared Jesus' body for his tomb. They, um, they dressed the body with aloes and, uh, cassia. And so we're gonna go over some scriptures that explain why his robes have this, the aroma of these fragrances. And as you know, um, when the woman came to, uh, dress his body with spices and perfume, they respected that the master is at rest. At that time, they probably didn't know, but they were, uh, walking in obedience at that time. But yes. So Preparation Day is when they prepared his body, and now Sabbath, he's resting from his completed work. His completed work of redeeming us all from sin and death. Okay, and I, I'm gonna go over, uh, a few, this, um, I'm gonna go over a few topics. Um, you'll see false, um, false witnesses, and you see false testimonies. So I'm just gonna take a, uh, a brief journey in Luke, chapter twenty-three. And again, I always love to bridge the Old Testament scriptures to the New Testament scriptures, and you'll see that God is the truth. He, he does not change. Does not change one bit, and and I find that very, very wonderful, very, very beautiful. So let's go to Luke, chapter twenty-three. And, uh, we're going to, uh, see what took place here. So just bear with me as I get there. Okay, Luke, chapter twenty-three. "Then the whole assembly rose and led him off to Pilate, and they began to accuse him, saying, 'We have found this man subverting, subverting our nation. He opposes payment of taxes to Caesar and claims to be Messiah, a king.'" I'm gonna stop right there. Reread earlier that Jesus distinctly and clearly said, "Give to Caesar what belongs to Caesar, and give to God what belongs to God." That's in Luke, chapter twenty, verse twenty-five. I want you to go to, if you can, if you have a Bible on hand, Psalm twenty-seven, Psalm, chapter twenty-seven, verse twelve. So as we take the journey through these Old Testament scriptures, you're going to see why I'm doing that, because Christ does the same thing when he wants to open your hearts, when he wants to open the eyes of your hearts to see the truth. Sometimes he doesn't open the eyes of our hearts to understanding, but at that appropriate time, he will. So let's turn to Psalm twenty-seven, verse twelve. It is written, "Do not turn me over to the desires of my foes, for false witnesses rise up against me, spouting malicious accusations." So you see, that was in Psalms, and then you see it echoed here in Luke, chapter twenty-three. And as you, if you can recall, when Jesus multiplied the fish and bread, they wanted to make him king, and he ran away, because he was not looking to be a political figure at this time. He's an eternal king, not of this world. So Pilate asked Jesus, "Are you the king of the Jews?" "You have said so," Jesus replied. "Then Pilate announced to the chief priests in the crowd, 'I find no basis for a charge against this man.'" Okay, now going back to the false accusations. Reread in Exodus, chapter twenty, verse sixteen. I didn't wanna overlook this. I wanted to share this with you. The commandment clearly says, "You shall not give false testimony against your neighbor." And again, I know we, um, reviewed, uh, Psalm, chapter thirty-nine, verse one. And I love it. This is your strong defense. Whenever you see somebody not, um, seeing you eye to eye, whether it's witnessing Jesus or telling somebody a scripture, and they just are viciously opposing you, it's best, that's why, uh, in James, be slow to speak and quick to listen. And, uh, to your defense, this is, um, what we should adhere to. Because I'm, I'm telling you, there, there are people who are vicious out there, and we have to use, um, these defense tactics that even our king, our eternal king and Savior did, used. Again, Psalm thirty-nine, verse one. "I said, 'I will watch my ways and keep my tongue from sin.' 'I will put a muzzle on my mouth while in the presence of the wicked.'" Now, when he declares who he says he is at the right hand of the Father, you know, they thought that was the ultimate blasphemy. of the Father, you know, they thought that was the ultimate blasphemy. We don't need any further testimony. But look carefully and you can see, this is what Jesus is thinking. "So I remained utterly silent," this is verse 2 of Psalm 39. "Not even saying anything good, but my anguish increased. My heart grew hot within me while I meditated. The fire burned and I spoke with my tongue." So we're gonna get there. So keep in mind Psalm 39. You see all the prophets, the laws, and the Psalms were all in reference to Jesus Christ. All the scriptures appointed Jesus Christ, our King and Creator. So let's go to, uh, let's go back and, uh, let's, um, dig deeper as we venture through these scriptures here. "But they insisted. He stirs up the people all over Judea by His teaching. He started in Galilee and has come all the way here, on hearing this Pilate ask if the man was a Galilean. When he learned that Jesus was under Herod's jurisdiction, he sent him to Herod, who was also in Jerusalem at that time. And when Herod saw Jesus, he was greatly pleased because for a long time he had been wanting to see Him. From what he had heard about Him, he hoped to see Him perform a sign or some sort. He plied, he plied him with many questions, but Jesus gave him no answer." Again, Psalm 39, verse 1. "The chief priests and the teachers of the law were standing there vehemently accusing him. Then Herod and his soldiers ridiculed and mocked him. Dressing him in elegant, dressing him in an elegant robe, they sent him back to Pilate. That day, Herod and Pilate became friends. Before this, they had been enemies. And Pilate called together the chief priests, the rulers, and the people, and said to them, 'You brought me this man as one who was inciting the people to rebellion. I've examined him in your presence and have found no basis for, for your charges against him. Neither has Herod, for he has sent him back to us.' As you can see, he has done nothing to deserve, he has nothing, he has done nothing to deserve death. Therefore, I will punish him and then release him. But the whole crowd shouted, "Away with this man! Release Barabbas to us!" Barabbas had drawn, had been thrown into prison for an insurrection in the city and for murder. I know we went over this before, but it's clearly a beautiful bridge. Let's take this bridge to Leviticus chapter 16, verse 10. You see that the guilty, I mean, the innocent die for the guilty. We also see another picture here about the scapegoat going, going to the wilderness. And we see that Jesus, huh, the scapegoat was led by the Spirit to go to the wilderness. So let's take a bridge to, uh, Leviticus chapter 16, verse 10. Now, all we see here in the Old Testament, these are all shadows, these are all signs, these are all symbols of what is yet to come. And again, people should not overindulge in Judaism. They should not overindulge in trying to, uh, put signs and symbols before the real thing, before the reality, Jesus Christ. And as mentioned to you before, Jesus completes us. And I talked to my friend, uh, about the six days. And, and I know that God talks in riddles and, and, you know, we work six days and then we fall short. But the only one who completes us is Jesus Christ. Without Him, we are incomplete. We are wretches. We are lame, crippled, blind. And He's the only one that could give us this beautiful rest in Him. If we are outside of Father, if we are not connected to life, we are walking corpses. I'm gonna keep it realistic with you. If you don't have the Zoe life, you don't have Christ living inside of you, you are a walking corpse with no purpose. And you will be sentenced to death. But let's go to Luke, Leviticus chapter 16, verse 10. And there we read, "But the goat chosen by Lot as the scapegoat shall be presented alive before the Lord to be used for making him torment by sending it into the wilderness as a scapegoat." But Rabbin means Jesus pardon. So He is actually a foreshadow of us. We were guilty and Jesus died the punishment that we deserved. So He said, "You will be holy too. If I die on your place, you can walk with me in paradise." So that's a beautiful thing to know that you are guilty. We are all guilty. In the eyes of the law, if you broke one stroke of the law, you're, you could have been considered to have broken the whole law. Well, as I'm taking this journey, I, I, I wasn't thinking about doing it, but let's go to James chapter, uh, I believe it's James chapter 2, where it talks about that, you know, people have the malicious finger, the malicious pointing finger and they think they, they can look down on others because they had their so-called acts together. And they have confidence in their own righteousness, as Jesus has mentioned in the parable of the Republican and the Pharisee. So don't look down on others. Because if you see that you are walking in obedience, it's, it's all by grace, not by your desire or your effort, but by God's Spirit. So let's read to, um, let's read James chapter 2, verse 8 to, uh, 12. Beautifully done. "If you really keep the royal law found in Scripture, love your neighbor as yourself. You're doing right. But if you show favoritism, you sin and are convicted by the law as lawbreakers. For whoever keeps the whole law and yet stumbles at just one point is guilty of breaking all of it. For he who said, 'You shall not commit adultery,' also said, 'You shall not murder.' If you do not commit adultery, but do commit murder, you have become a lawbreaker. Speak and act as those who are going to be judged by the law that gives freedom. Because judgment without mercy will be shown to anyone who has not been merciful. Mercy trimes over judgment." Now, look at this person here. He's a murderer. Look at, he's a, he's a gangbanger. Go to church every Sunday. I go to church every Saturday. I give my tithes and offerings. Look at this drug dealer. Look at this hitman. But a true believer would not be like the prodigal son's brother wanting to be honored for their loyalty. But a true believer would be so ecstatic. I know we have been wrestling, bumping heads, but I'm so glad you've come to your senses. Come home. You're family now. We family. That's what it's all about. But yeah, um, the scapegoat, Jesus was led to the wilderness and He suffered many trials. And then the ultimate trial obviously is dying on the cross in our stead, paying for us and suffering the punishment that we deserved. What crime has this man committed? I have found in him no grounds for the death penalty. Therefore, I will have him punished and then release him. But with loud shouts, they insistently demanded that he be crucified, and their shouts prevailed. So Pilate decided to grant their demand. He released the man who had been thrown into prison for insurrection and murder, the one they asked for, and surrendered Jesus to their will. "As the soldiers led him away, they seized Simon from Cyrene, who was on his way in from the country, and put the cross on him and made him carry it behind Jesus." Now, obviously, as you see, that Jesus couldn't carry His cross. But I, I want to remind y'all about Hannah's prayer in, uh, First Samuel, I believe, First Samuel, chapter 2. And I, I want everyone to see that just because you stumble and just because you may fall down with your cross or with your assignment, you're drained, people ridiculing you. At times, your flesh is, I don't feel like doing this. It's because you are armed with strength. Anybody could get blows. But it takes a strong spiritual person to take the blows, to turn the other cheek, to endure ridicule and scorn. It takes a great deal of strength. And that, obviously, we know that strength comes from the Holy Spirit. Let's read here. This is Hannah's prayer, chapter 2. And, uh, I'm gonna get to it. As a matter of fact, I love the whole prayer, but, um, if I can find it, um, I know it's here. But, um, as I'm looking through it, I'm, I'm going to tell you that when we are weak and, uh, and, and everybody thinks that we're weak and we seem like we are, uh, we're not victorious, but you know what? It appeared that way when Jesus was struggling with His cross. Simon from Cyrene had to carry the cross for Him. So let's read this here. This is verse 5, um, actually verse 4. It's First Samuel, chapter 2, verse 4. "The bows of the warriors are broken, but those who stumbled are armed with strength." And even at the end of her prayer, this is referring to the Father, "He will give strength to His king and exalt the horn of His anointed." We also see this echoed in, uh, 2 Corinthians, chapter 12, the thorn in the side. You see when we are submissive to God, we are submissive to His strength. We are submissive to His power. And His power is made perfect in weakness. See, when we're puffed up and we think that our, we can make our, our strength our God or the flesh, that is not victorious in God's eyes. That's not strength at all. That's just pride. And eventually, you'll wear out like garments. You'll wear out. So there's no need to lean on your own strength, but rely on God's strength in all your weaknesses. So if you're facing difficulties, you're facing hardships, you're facing challenges and circumstances that are out of control, be of good courage as letting you know the power of His resurrection, the power of His, uh, of resurrection. You see, Christ was weak, frail. Some Psalms say that He can count all the bones in His body. But here, to encourage you, again, if you're stumbling, you're struggling, even with sins, if you're struggling with sins and you, you're going through hardship after hardship and trial after trial, and you just don't think you can make it and you're asking God to take this from me. Let's 2 Corinthians, chapter 12, verse 9. "And this is what the Lord said to Paul. What he said to me, 'My grace is sufficient for you, for my power is made perfect in weakness. Therefore, I will boast all the more gladly about my weaknesses, so that Christ's power may rest on me. That is why, for Christ's sake, I delight in weaknesses, in insults, in hardships, in persecutions, in difficulties. For when I'm weak, then I'm strong.'" God purposely does this to let us rely on Him. We see that in, uh, in Judges, Gideon, "You have too much money, man." He didn't want us to boast about our ability because then we'll be puffed up and not give Him the glory. He's a loving Father and He, He doesn't want you to have temporary success. Anybody can have temporary success. But if you rely on Him fully as little children and, and you rely on Him through all your weaknesses, you will have glory that will be everlasting. That's why Jesus says, "I don't seek my own glory, for if I did, it, it means nothing." So it's good to rely on, on God through all your weaknesses, because then when you are weak, you are strong. I know it's a totally, it's totally the opposite of the world's view of what's powerful and what, and, and, and and what is, uh, macho and cool. You know, the aggressor seems to be the person who is the one that's strong, but that's clearly not the case. You're truly strong when you rely on God as little children and through all your weaknesses. That makes you more than a conqueror. And I also want you to understand, uh, this, um, the, the beauty of this also, um, when, when, uh, I'm, I'm kind of just, uh, as people say, I'm improvising, but I'm, I'm just, the, the scriptures are coming up to me about, uh, uh, being strong in God. And, uh, I want you to turn to 2 Chronicles, chapter 32, verse, uh, verse 7. And, uh, at this time, you know, um, an Assyrian nation threatened Jerusalem. They were wiping out nation after nation, destroying all their gods. And then when Hezekiah, um, got wind of this, um, terror threatened Jerusalem, oh, they, they were shaken. But this is verse 7 going down. "Be strong and courageous. Do not be afraid or discouraged because of the king of Assyria and the vast army with him. For there is a greater power with us than with him. With him is only the arm of flesh. But with us is the Lord our God to help us and to fight our battles." And the people gained confidence from what Hezekiah, the king of Judah, said. So when we rely on God's strength through all our weaknesses, then we give Him all the glory and the worship. And then as a benefit, God makes us more than conquerors. So then, you know, you go to 1 John, you make the connection, you you said, hey, that's, that's similar to 1 John, chapter 4, verse 4. Right? 1 John, chapter 4, verse 4. And everybody loves to hear this, uh, this scripture. It's, it's motivational and it's inspirational. But this is what God is talking about. And this is directing to us. You know that Christ, the hope of glory, the, the mysterious treasure of God is living inside of you. You can clearly and with, uh, you can clearly say with confidence, 1 John, chapter 4, verse 4. "You, dear children, are from God and have overcome them, because the one who is in you is greater than the one who is in the world. They are from the world and therefore speak from the viewpoint of the world and the world listens to them. But we are from God. So we have that strength that does not wear out, even though our outward appearance looks worn out. So we see Jesus looks worn out on the outside, but the devil knows. He knows that Jesus is being tyrant. He knows that scripture from Hannah's prayer. Those who stumbled are armed with God's strength. You cannot stop God. You may be dropping the cross, face putting mud, but He knows He can't knock them out." All right, so let's go to, uh, I know we're going to come to Alright, so let's go to uh, I know we're going to come to a close uh with Luke, chapter twenty-three, but um there's a few more verses that I'd like to go over. And uh and we're gonna see connections again, not going back to the Old Testament, but we're gonna go to Revelation. Okay. A large number of people followed him, including women who mourned and wept for him. Jesus turned and said to them, daughters of Jerusalem, do not weep for me, weep for yourselves and for your children. For the time will come when you will say, blessed are the childless woman, the wombs that never bore and the breasts that never nursed. Then they will say to the mountains, fall on us and to the hills, cover us, for if people do these things when the tree is green, what will happen when it is dry? Let's take a little time walk to Revelation, chapter six, verse fifteen through seventeen. Revelation is chapter six, verses fifteen through seventeen. Again, if I'm too fast for you, I will definitely um text Brother Scott these scriptures. And then he will text them to you for you to eat later on. That's your own time and leisure. Let's go to Revelation, chapter six, verse fifteen through seventeen. That is, and it and it is written, then the kings of the earth, the princes, the generals, the rich, the mighty, and the ev- and everyone else, both slave and free, hid in caves and among the rocks of the mountains. They called to the mountains and the rocks, fall on us and hide us from the face of him who sits on the throne and from the wrath of the lamb, for the great day of their wrath has come, and who can withstand it? Two of the men, both criminals, were also led out with him to be executed. And when they came to the place called the Skull, they crucified him there, along with the criminals, one on his right and the other on his left. Jesus said, Father, forgive them, for they do not know what they are doing. As I mentioned to you before, if you don't have the Christ, uh spirit of Christ living in in corpse, you are under the control of the enemy and his demons. You are dead in your trespasses, so you carry out the desire of the enemy unknowingly. People may think that um they're doing a good service for God by killing the prophets and the servants that are sent to them. But they're really giving God a disservice. They are walking corpses, so that's why Jesus said they do not know what they are doing. They're spiritually dead. So if you do see somebody opposing you vehemently, viciously, Jesus warned us, don't give pearls to swine, lest they turn again and rip you to pieces. We are here on an assignment. We're on a rescue mission. We're looking for God's lost redeemed children, and they're buried out there. We're looking for those hidden treasures. Now, I'm not saying you should just go, oh, I think this person shows an awe, I think this person shows an awe. No, you just go by faith. And you share them your heart, and then obviously, by the help of the Holy Spirit, he'll give you wisdom and discernment. If it's time to move on, move on. But also have empathy for those who are dead spiritually. For as it is written, foolishness to those who are perishing, for those who believe it is a power. And uh we're gonna read, um we're gonna see sacrifices being fulfilled here. Um, they divided up his clothes by casting lots. So we can read here in Psalm twenty-two, verse eighteen. Again, the laws of prophets and the Psalms all point to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. All the scriptures are pointed to Jesus Christ. So let's take another bridge to the Old Testament. And I I I wanna even go further. The cru- we're talking about the crucifixion here, right? In verse one, we say, we see, it's written, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Okay, we see that in Matthew. And this is David. He has never met um Jesus a man. I I I know he um is anointed with the Holy Spirit and and Jesus shares his thoughts with him. And this intimacy, I mean, God referred to him as a man after his own heart. But when we go to verse eighteen, look what's written here. They divide my clothes among them and cast lots for my garment. As we go to even verse sixteen, if you jump a little earlier. When you hear him talking about animals, he's talking about men, vicious men, his vicious accusers who said, crucify him, crucify him. This man is causing insurrection here and he says he's a Messiah. Dogs surround me. A pack of villains encircles me. They pierced my hands and my feet. All my bones are on display. People stare and gloat over me. Who is that? That's Jesus, and this is all in Psalm twenty-two. How would David know the thoughts of Christ if he doesn't have his spirit? So again, in your journey, when you're being shaped and you're being molded into his image, you are going to experience encounters similar to this. It may not be that detrimental, but you'll understand. You'll have a deeper understanding in your relationship with Jesus Christ. You have to share in his pain and as um as mentioned earlier. It's a co- there's gonna be a cost in your life. They said, he saved others. Let him save himself. He's God's Messiah, the chosen one. The soldiers also came up and mocked him. They offered him wine and vinegar and said, if you're the king of the Jews, save yourself. There was written, there was a written notice above him which read, this is the king of the Jews. One of the criminals who hung there hurled insults at him. Aren't you the Messiah? Save yourself in us. But the other criminal rebuked him. Don't you fear God? Since you are under the same sentence, we are punished justly, for we are getting what our, we are, we are getting what is punish punished justly, for we are getting what our deeds deserve, but this man has done nothing wrong. Then he said, Jesus, remember me when you go, when you come into your kingdom. Jesus answered him, truly, I tell you, today you will walk with me in paradise. Just like Bar um Barabbas is a picture of us. We're the guilty and the innocent died in our place. Well, here, this thief is a a beautiful picture of us. You know, in other gospels, we see that all the criminals, including this one, was making fun of Jesus. He was mocking him just like the other one. But now we see by God's grace and mercy, he came to his senses and realized, hey, this man has done nothing wrong. He making fun of him and man, we deserve this, man. We we're thieves, we are criminals, we, our 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 sins deserve this punishment. And so now we are pleading to all of our friends of the past, friends that we we see at work on the street, people that we know, family, say, hey, man, I I know I used to mock Jesus just like everybody else, but man, I don't see nothing wrong with him, man. Why are you disrespecting him? All he did was come here, heal the blind, raise the dead, making a plea for us, freeing us from the sin of sin and death, knowing the seriousness of our crimes. So again, truly, I tell you today, you will be with me in paradise. Some people have a misunderstanding. They think it's today, but no, truly, I tell you today, you will walk with me in paradise. This thief, as long as, along with David and all the patriarchs, they are resting. And uh for you, a beautiful um bridge to this. This is in Isaiah, chapter thirty-three, verse seventeen, where he says, he gave the promises thief on the right hand side, you will walk with me in paradise. So let's go take a journey to Isaiah, chapter thirty-three, verse seventeen. Isaiah, chapter thirty-three, verse seventeen. Your eyes will see the king in his beauty and view a land that stretches afar. These are little verses, but this is just showing you that Christ is faithful in his promises to all who believe. You just gotta keep hanging on those words. Don't be fooled by your eyes. These are all illusions. They're all sto- all storms. You just gotta keep our eyes focused on the word, who is Jesus Christ. Anytime you have a timely word, it's Jesus Christ. Anytime you hear the word repeated, it's the word God in your heart as a shepherd. The word is our shepherd. It was now about noon and darkness came over and the whole land until three in the afternoon. For the sun stopped shining and the curtain of the temple was torn in two. Jesus called out with a loud voice, Father, into your hands I commit my spirit. When he had said this, he breathed his last. You don't think the Psalms are pointing to Jesus Christ? Let's go to Psalm thirty-one, verse five. Psalm, chapter thirty-one, verse five. It is written. I'm gonna go a little further so you can see. This is, just think about Jesus talking to the Father. Since you are my rock and my fortress, for the sake of your name, lead and guide me. Keep me free from the trap that is set for me, for you are my refuge. Into your hands I commit my spirit. Deliver me, Lord, my faithful God. So we see now David through the inspiration of the Holy Spirit is echoing the thoughts of Christ. When you see your character changing and streams of water come out of you, streams of scripture, and it's evidence that you have the Holy Spirit. You have Christ's spirit living inside of you. So we take no credit. We're just vessels of clay. But we're thankful that Jesus by grace decided to live in our bosom. But he's the way to the Father, nobody else. That's why we're on this journey. We're on this journey because he's the way, the truth, and light, and we are coming home. And we are longing to receive a a warm embrace of our Father. We have been separated from the Father because of our sins, and we know it's highly detestable to our Father. But now, like prodigal children, we will be so elated to know that God is walking with us. He's welcoming us with open arms, telling everybody to get a robe and a ring and some sandals for our feet. Alright, so let's read further down and I'm going, again, I'm going to um talk about, as we come to a close, uh we're gonna talk about the the perfumes and spices and and we're gonna talk about Preparation Day and the Sabbath and what is pointing to. You see, um God is a, does not just start a project, he finishes it. So Shabbat is, it's done, it's finished. The centurions seeing what had happened praised God and said, surely this is a righteous man. When all the people who had gathered to witness this sight saw what took place, they beat their breasts and went away. But all those who knew him, including the woman who had followed him from Galilee, stood at a distance watching these things. Now there was a man named Joseph, a member of the council, a good and upright man who had not consented to their decision and action. He came from the Judean town of Arimathea, and he himself was waiting for the kingdom of God. Going to pile, he asked for Jesus's body. Then he took it down, wrapped it in linen cloth, and placed it in a tomb cut in rock, one in which no one had yet been laid. It was Preparation Day, and the Sabbath was about to begin. The woman who had come with Jesus from Galilee followed Joseph and saw the tomb and how his body was laid in. Then they went home and prepared spices and perfumes, but they rested on the Sabbath in obedience to the commandment. Okay, Preparation Day. Obviously, we can see that this is when Jesus's body was prepared for his tomb. And the woman did not dis- disturb his rest in the tomb. That's what it's focused on. And we see this again, we went over Hebrews, chapter four, verse nine to eleven. So you know, as a, as this um initiation, when we know that we're given an assignment and we know that Christ is working through us in this this temporary body or tent. We know that when we finish it, when we finish bearing fruit for him, we also will rest from our works. Just as he did. And then we can say, now we can enter his rest. We, but sweet fellowship, we can be in the sheltered resting place of our King, the dwelling place of God, where there's no wickedness, no darkness, no lying, no gossiping. Perfect rest. So let's go to Hebrews, chapter four, verse nine to eleven. I'm gonna talk about verse nine. I'm gonna go from verse nine and I'm and and I'm gonna finish from from verses nine to eleven. So again, I'll I'll text these scriptures to you. You can read on your own. There remain, there remains then a Sabbath rest for the people of God. For anyone who enters God's rest also enters from their works, just as God did from his. Let us therefore make every effort to enter that rest, so that no one will perish by following their example of disobedience. I don't know uh if I can continue working uh bearing fruit, you know, this is no, I want to enter that rest, which is the new heaven and new earth. That is the ultimate Sabbath rest. And we also see that in Revelations, chapter fourteen. So excuse me, I mean, I would have been a a lot quicker to the move, but uh uh these scriptures are coming up in my head. And uh again, the Holy Spirit says this about resting from our works. Listen carefully, it is written, then I heard a voice from heaven say, righteous, lesson of the dead who die in the Lord from now on. Yes, says the Spirit, they will rest from their labor, for their deeds will follow them. So you think that, oh, I I have faith, I have faith, I I faith. Are you doing anything? How can we see the fruit of your faith if you're just doing nothing, being complacent? The Holy Spirit is encouraging us to to believe that if we have as we're living in this tent and we're not, we're not just taking up space, yes, because of Christ in us, we're going to pro- um produce fruit. As it's written, you need to abide in me. If you don't abide in me, you cannot bear any fruit. And those who do not bear fruit, what happens? They're thrown in the fire. But bear fruit. You good to somebody out in the street? Don't just say, oh, I hope you're okay. I feel sorry for you. Wow. Who gets that person some water? Get him something to eat. Maybe give him some money. Maybe give him some clothes. We're not just gonna sit there and just say we love this person in word. The evidence of our love is the fruitful deeds. Now, please, don't get this twisted. We're not working to be saved. We are working because we are saved. And as a believer, we get more encouraged because we see that we're not only adhering to God's word, but we are growing in God's word. And we're seeing that he's exercising our faith. He's bringing us to more uh, more intense challenges. And just like uh Brother Scott was mentioning, how these athletes, they prepare for these events. And it's for a short moment. Even their crown or the gold medal they receive or the silver or bronze medal is temporary. But we are being, uh, we are pre, we're preparing for a, a crown that lasts forever. And it's worth it. And I know it's um written, I believe in first Corinthians chapter nine, where it's worth running that race. So anytime when you see, why is this trial happening or why am I getting hit here? It's because God is perfecting your faith. He's polishing your faith, which is more valuable than silver and gold that perishes in the fire. So, and the enemy knows that. He's trying to snuff out your faith. And I want, um, I, I, I'm going to actually uh, read this to you here. Just give me one moment. It's written. First Corinthians chapter nine verse twenty-four, to the end of the chapter. "Do you not know that in a race all the runners run, but only one gets the prize? Run in such a way as to get the prize. Everyone who competes in the games goes into strict training. They do it to get a crown that will not last. But we do it to get a crown that will last forever. Therefore I do not run like someone running aimlessly. I do not fight like a boxer beating the air. No, I shake a blow to my body and make it my slave, so that after I have preached to others, I myself will not be disqualified for the prize, which is Jesus Christ." Go through training. Man, how's that brother going through that? How's that sister going through that? You know what? Though righteous man has many afflictions, the Lord delivers him from them all. We go by those words. That's too stressful. I don't know about following Jesus. It don't look too pretty to me. But we're going through inten, intense training. And as it's written, perseverance, suffering leads to perseverance, and perseverance leads to character. And character leads to hope and our living hope, the whole Christ living inside of you. So I'm just, uh, I do apologize. I, I would have had these uh, prepared before, but I'm, as as we're venturing, I'm learning and in the Holy Spirit will always give us reminders um, when we have these studies. To let us know that it's all worth it. It's all gonna be worth it. And we already have the victory in Christ Jesus. Now going back to the spices and the perfumes. We see that um, that Jesus preparation day and the weekly Sabbath until the cross. And preparation honored the fact that, again, Nicodemus and Joseph prepared Jesus's body for his burial. The ladies did not bring any spices or perfumes to honor Christ's rest from his works. So I will say, in my own words, do not disturb the master's rest. Let him rest in peace. Okay? And I, I just want y'all to understand that the Old Testament should not just be overlooked. It's the revelation concealed and as the, they say the New Testament is uh, I forgot the other way around, but well concealed and and concealed revelations. I don't know how it goes. It'll come to my mind later on, but let's, let's get to the point here. Um, Psalm forty-five verse eight. There is written. "All your robes are fragrant, fragrant with myrrh and aloes and cassia. From palaces adorned with ivory, the music of the strings makes you glad. Daughters of kings are among you, honored women at your right hand, as a royal bride in gold of offer." So we see that Jesus is resting. And then, on the third day, wakes up. To show the beautiful hour of resurrection. And that's what this gospel is all about. You see, if there's no resurrection, there's no gospel. There's no, there's no, there is no good news. I'll read about that later in first Corinthians chapter fifteen. And then uh, I'm going to let you all understand that if you receive encounters, and we know Sister Gail mentioned about encounters, I mentioned about encounters. Brother Scott mentioned about encounters. It means that you are a chosen witness. And not everybody's gonna see what you see. Why? Because God chose the babes. Not the wise and learned, and he chose those to reveal the Father and vice versa. The Father has chosen the little babes to reveal his son. So we see that echoed in Luke chapter ten. So, let's read um, here. Um, about this beautiful resurrection. "Day of the week, very early in the morning, the woman took the spices and had, they had prepared and went to the tomb. They found the stone rolled away from the tomb, but when they entered, they did not find the body of the Lord Jesus. While they were wondering about this, suddenly two men in clothes that gleamed like lightning stood beside them. In their fright, the women bowed down with their faces to the ground, but the men said to them, why do you look for the living among the dead? He's not here. He is risen. Remember how he told you while he was still with you in Galilee? The Son of Man must be delivered over the, over to the hands of sinners, be crucified, and on the third day be raised again. Then they remembered his words. When they came back from the tomb, they told all of these things to the eleven and to all the others. It was Mary Magdalene, Mary, the mother of James, and the others with them, who told this to the apostles. But they did not believe the woman, because their words seemed to be like nonsense. But Peter got up and ran to the tomb. Bending over, he saw the strips of linen lying by themselves, and he went away, wondering to himself what had happened. You see this opening up here? Lazarus come forth, take off his grave clothes. Take off this fallen nature, those rags, and put on immortality. Wedding clothes. That's what you see the grave clothes left behind. Again, we see Bartimaeus putting the cloak aside. We are now circumcised. We are now looking forward to our lot of inheritance, our resurrected bodies from Christ. So now, the same, now that same day, two of them were going to a village called Emmaus. About seven miles from Jerusalem. And they were talking with each other about everything that had happened. And as they talked and discussed these things with each other, Jesus himself came up and walked along with them. But they were kept from recognizing him. I want y'all to know that Jesus is not only man, but he's also God. And you never know who you're entertaining. So always do good. But we come to Mark chapter sixteen verse twelve, and it's written, "Afterward Jesus appeared in a different form to two of them while they were walking in the country." So he was in a different form, and obviously, they could not recognize him. So as they just um, talked and discussed these things with each other, Jesus himself came came up and walked along with them, but they were kept from recognizing him. And he asked them, what are you discussing together as you walk along? They took, they stood still, their faces downcast. One of them, named Cleopas, asked him, "Are you the only one visiting Jerusalem who does not know the things that have happened there in these days?" "What things?" "About Jesus of Nazareth," they replied. "He was a prophet, powerful in word and deed before God and all people. And the chief priests and our rulers handed him over to the, to be sentenced to death, and they crucified him. And but we had hoped that he was the one who was going to redeem Israel. And what is more, it is the third, and what is more, it is the third day since all this took place." In addition, some of our women were amazed, some of our women amazed us. They went to the tomb early this morning, but they didn't find his body. They came and told us that they had seen a vision of angels who said he was alive. Then some of our companions went to the tomb and found it, just as the woman had said, but they did not see Jesus. He said to them, "How foolish you are, and how slow to believe all that the prophets have spoken. Did not, did not the Messiah have to suffer these things and then enter his glory? And beginning with Moses and all the prophets, he explained to them what was said in all the scriptures concerning himself." As they approached the village to which they were going, Jesus continued on as if he were going farther. But they urged him strongly, "Stay with us, for it is nearly evening. The day is almost over." So he went in to stay with them. And when he was at the table with him, he took bread, gave thanks, broke it, and began to give it to them. Then their eyes were opened and they recognized him, and he disappeared from their sight. They asked each other, "Were not our hearts burning within us while he talked with us on the road and opened the scriptures to us?" You see, these Bible studies and your prayer time and your alone time, God, the Holy Spirit will open your hearts to things you didn't understand. But as you have this intimacy with him, you're going to journey through these scriptures. So you can have a deeper understanding of who he is. And then you're gonna have a deeper understanding of who you are. You talk about these athletes, they have, they have an identity, but it's temporary. You know, after they get the gold or even after they get the Lombardi trophy, what's gonna happen after they retire? What's their identity? But we know we have a permanent identity. Again, I know um, Brother Scott and I, we talked and, and, and the devil, when he was testing Jesus in the wilderness, he kept saying, "If you're the Son of Man, if you're the Son of Man." He's trying to knock him off, trying to knock him off his feet and say, "You don't know who you are. Get out of here. You have no purpose. Get out of here. Why don't you turn these stones of bread? Aren't you the Son of Man?" But Jesus knew who he is and is to He knew his identity. He knew he's the devil's lord and, lord and king and creator. He created him. He knew his identity. So don't let anybody throw you off and tell you, uh, you ain't no Christian. You know who you are because of what Christ, our King, has said. Now again, we're gonna read um, about the chosen witnesses and how God manifests himself. Okay? So people, some people may see God physically, face to face, but their hearts are closed, just like the Pharisees. They saw Jesus face to face, but they just didn't believe he was God, their king and creator. They didn't believe he was the Son of God. But God manifests himself to chosen witnesses. And our lives will change whenever he would, we receive encounters from the Lord Jesus. Each and every time we get a revelation, a confirmation, we start to change and we start to like, wow, this is, this is real. God is revealing himself through his timely words. So while they were still talking about this, Jesus himself stood among them and said to them, "Peace be with you." And they were startled and frightened, thinking they saw a ghost. He said to them, "Why are you troubled? And why do you, why do doubts rise in your minds? Look at my hands and my feet. It is I myself. Touch me and see. A ghost does not have flesh and bones, as you see I have." When he had said this, he showed them his hands and feet. And while they were still, while they still did not believe it because of joy and amazement, he asked them, "Do you have anything to eat?" They gave him a, a piece of broiled fish, and he took it and ate it in their presence. He said to them, "This is what I told you while I was still with you. Everything must be fulfilled. That is written about me in the law of Moses, the prophets, and the Psalms, as we discussed earlier." Then he opened their minds, just like the, the two disciples on the way to Emmaus, and their hearts were burning. Well, look, then he opened their minds so they could understand the scriptures. He told them, "This is what is written. The Messiah will suffer and rise from the dead on the third day, and repentance for forgiveness of sins will be preached in his name to all nations, beginning at Jerusalem. You are witnesses of these things. I'm going to send you what my Father has promised. But stay in the city until you have been clothed with power from on high." He's referring to Pentecost, when the Holy Spirit descended upon them as a strong wind, and they started to speak the languages of people who were all over the place. From all nations, they spoke in their languages. And as you see, this is a first way of preaching to all the four corners of the world, because obviously, if somebody's coming, I'm just ad-libbing it. Somebody's coming from Brazil, and somebody's coming from China, and they come to Jerusalem, and they see fishermen and uh, people, tax collectors and, and uh, the lowly people speaking their languages. They're gonna go home. They go back to China, they're gonna go, say, man, these, these people, they speak Hebrew, but they spoke in my language. They spoke in Chinese. They spoke in Swahili. So that's the way of God, just spreading the news and bringing everybody back together. As we see um, um, in the beginning, at the Tower of Babel, God wanted to have, he made a promise to Abraham, "I'm gonna make you, your house will be a house of all nations." How could there be a house of all nations when everybody's just staying in one spot? So then he confused the languages. But now, to embrace this beautiful gift from God, now all the nations are coming together as one, and everybody's going to understand that Jesus, his promise is being fulfilled for all of us. I want y'all to um, go to Acts chapter ten verse thirty-nine through forty-three. And, and I'm gonna go to uh, Luke chapter ten verse twenty-one through twenty-two. So if you receive an encounter, you better kiss God's feet. I'm kissing. There's so many encounters, I can tell you. We'll be here till five in the morning, so, but it's just a beautiful wonder how he speaks to you and it's just, it's just amazing. It's beyond words. But anyway, let's go to Acts chapter ten. Verse thirty-nine through forty-three. And this is uh, Peter talking to Cornelius and his household. And you know, he's being honest. It's written. "We are witnesses of everything he did in the country of the Jews and in Jerusalem. They killed him by hanging him on a cross. But God raised him from the dead on the third day and caused him to be seen. He was not seen by all the people, but by witnesses from God had already chosen by us who ate and drank with him after he rose from the dead. He commanded us to preach to the people and to testify that he is the one whom God appointed as judge of the living and the dead. All the prophets testify about him, that everyone who believes in him receives, receives forgiveness of sins through his name." So we see, if you believe in Jesus and this message, the gospel, you received encounters. And yes, we're human. We fall back in sin sometimes. We fall down. We stumble. We we uh, we struggle with sins, and then all of a sudden, we see, we receive another encounter. Like, what's going on here? And you see, receive another encounter. This is a gift from God and, and we see this echoed again after Jesus. Commissioned his disciples to go from town to town to heal and cast out, heal people and cast out demons. And this is what he said to the Father in a latian. Luke chapter ten. Since twenty-one through twenty-two. I praise you, Father, Lord of heaven and earth, because you have hidden these things from the wise and learned and revealed them to little children. Yes, Father, but this is what you were pleased to do. All things have been committed to me by my Father. No one knows who the son is except the Father and no one knows the son, um, except the Father, no one knows who the Father is except the son. And those, here's a key. And those to whom the son chooses to reveal him. I'll read further down. Then he turned to his disciples and said privately, blessed are the eyes that see what you see. For I tell you that many prophets and kings wanted to see what you see, but did not see it. And to hear what you hear. Receiving. Go to a man. When you see Bible studies or when you see sermons, you go and turn on the TV and you see these same words, it is. God, it's a gift of God, these are the streams of water that he's talking about. But then now when you are. Names of living water will come, come out of you because you are found. Water coming out of your mouth. Lessons, teachings. Helping people understand that's not the right way. Come this way. Beautiful. So again. Don't try to give yourself credit. I, I raised my hand all the way to, all the way up. I wasn't looking for Jesus. I was not. I was not looking for Jesus. I was just like that thief on a right-hand side of the cross, making fun of him. But then all of a sudden. When I'm. And to see that. I saw. I, 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 I shared testimony with other people, but, uh, people who, um, are just joining in, yeah, there was a gun in my car. Undercover cops sting operation in Boston and they just did not recover that gun. I came over to get the car which they confiscated and they still did not find that gun. You mean to tell me? And I was, I was a knucklehead at that time. I, I thought, oh man, I was just sure luck. But then when I look back, I said, man, that was covered in God, I was covered in the blood of Jesus. I wasn't thinking about no Jesus, I was, I was thinking about trying to get a lawyer. Until one of my roommates who used to live with these guys that I was living with. And while my mother was definitely trying to find help me, oh, whoa, did you know about these boys dealing with drugs like this and? Turner's mother said, you know what, you need to pray to Jesus. And I'm like, what, pray to Jesus? I, I need to get a lawyer. But then now when I look back. I'm no longer mocking. By God's grace, I come to my senses. I'm like, that was mercy. That was one of my encounters of Jesus. So if anybody tries to tell you, I was looking for Jesus, I was studying in this school and I did this. That's just, uh, to me, I know that is someone who's just wise and learned. And they may have an appeal to the world and they may, um, speak on the world's viewpoint and everybody cheers them on. But I know. A believer is someone that knows. I was messing up and for somehow God just took me by that my collar and said, ah. You come to work for me. Yeah, yeah, you come here, follow me. So again. We are chosen witnesses and. So if you're struggling, like, I know Jesus died on the cross, how would I know that he died for me? How would I know that he died for me? So again, when he had led them out to the vicinity of Bethany. He lifted up his hands and blessed them. While he was blessing them, he left them and was taken up into heaven. Then they worshipped him and returned to Jerusalem with great joy and stayed continually at the temple praising God. I'm gonna go to, I'm going to go to Matthew twenty-eight, verse seventeen. And yes, that was, uh, uh, a recollection of what took place. But you know, when we, when we look at other scriptures here, even the ones who were there seeing him ascend to the clouds. Look what's written here. Matthew chapter twenty-eight, verse seventeen, when they saw him, they worshipped him. But some doubted. Then Jesus came to them and said. His following encouraging words of, uh, their assignments, commissioning them. But now it all, to me. It all wraps up to this, these verses here. If there's no resurrection. We're pretty much. Having these Bible studies. It's all about the promise. And we know that the promise was not handed, it was not handed through the law, it's handed outside the law. So now the brother of the law and the brother outside of law have something in common. They can be justified by faith in this promise of eternal life. But if there's no resurrection. I'm gonna read to you. First Corinthians chapter fifteen, verses twelve through nineteen, and then we'll come to a close and I'll. Just share with you some views. First Corinthians chapter fifteen, verses twelve through nineteen. It is written. But if it is preached that Christ has been raised from the dead, how can some of you say there's no resurrection of the dead? If there's no resurrection of the dead, then not even Christ has been raised. And if Christ has not been raised, our preaching is useless. And so is your faith. More than that, we are then found to be false witnesses about God, who we have testified about God, that he raised Christ from the dead. But he did not raise him if he, but he did not raise him if in fact the dead are not raised. For if the dead are not raised, then Christ has not been raised either. And if Christ has been raised, your faith is futile. You are still in your sins. Then those also who have fallen asleep in Christ are lost. If only for this life, we have hope in Christ. We are of all people, most to be pitied. We believe in the resurrection. We believe that all the circumcisions that were done in the Old Testament was all done on the cross. He circumcises from our fallen nature. We have taken off our grave clothes, now he's given us immortality, he's given us this Zoe life, as they say, eternal life. So now we live in these temporary tents, we're aging, some of us are falling apart. On the outside, but we are being renewed on the inside every day. We're being reassured that, yes, we will enter his rest. And we will be in his glorified presence, he's gonna wake us up and we're gonna be at peace. This is the rest he's talking about. Now I know it's a mystery. But as we receive encounter, deliverance. Every time we see that we are going through trial after trial. We're seeing that our faith is being refined and tested. More precious than gold and silver and it's gonna end up in a latian and worship and praise. Yes, we're gonna have grief. Yes, we're gonna be hit here and there. Smacked down, perplexed, shipwrecked. And, um. It just dawned on me, you know, we, we, we talk about the LGBTQ and how, uh. People are so overly concerned about their profits and, and greed and, you know, ESPN. I don't know the name of the analyst, but she just said, hey, I don't think that, um, transgender men should be included in. Women's sports activities. And, uh, Griffin the third, who was a quarterback for the Redskins, made similar comments and they both got fired. So you know, when people speak the truth, you know, we're gonna be punished and you know, we're soldiers, we, that's just the reality of it all. But if anyone says that no resurrection. Why have sermons? It's a false gospel. We want to be free, not only from Egypt, but we want to be free from our old raggedy selves. We want to enjoy sweet fellowship, we want to have this relationship that Adam and Eve had. Before the fall. We are no longer naked anymore because we're gonna be clothed in Papa's presence. We don't have to be worried about, we don't have to be stressed, we don't have to have all fears and anxieties. Because we know our Father truly and deeply loves us and he's all we need. I, uh. I can go on and on. About how wonderful Jesus is and still to this day, I mean, sometimes I go through. I kid you not, I, I, I'm like, I'm, I'm paying certain bills, I'm paying, I'm trying to, uh, make ends meet here. And then I'm like, how, how did that happen? How, how did, I could have sworn we were short five hundred dollars, I kid you not. But I'm like, wow, and all of a sudden I, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, make deposits here and, uh. The money's not dispensed and I'm like, how's that possible? I, I know I took in, in all these attacks. Sometimes it could be discouraging, but then I realized as a soldier. We're, we're embarking territory. So you know, anytime you see. You wanna say to yourself, man, why me? Why, why does this happen? It means that you're on a verge of your breakthrough and the devil does not want to see. God's hand extended to you to bless you. And when you see trials like this arise. Be encouraged, you know you gaining territory, you're more than a conqueror. And, um, and then when you see, when you receive the blessing. You receive the reassurance that God has plans for you. Then of course, you can go to scriptures. Nothing can separate us from the love of God. Who has any charges against those who are chosen by God? Nobody. The devil, not the world, not even your own flesh. Nobody, no one can separate you from the love of God, our King. There's any, uh, questions, any concerns, because this is, uh, this is a climax, this is where Jesus defeated death. He defeated and he fulfilled the scripture from Genesis, chapter three, I believe. He bruised his head, devil bruised his heel. And he's a seed that was promised to crush him and resurrect us, he's setting us free. And, uh, I just encourage you. If you're, um, just starting to, um, believe and you're young in a faith. Don't try to over, if, if I send you these scriptures and you can't read them. Just read one, meditate on it, it could be a half hour, just mid on just one verse and that's how you start to grow. Uh, we don't want to, uh, uh, to, uh, how would I say? Intimidate you or overwhelm you, that's a better choice of words, we don't wanna overwhelm you. But yes, just like, um, babes, we wanna encourage you to just. Like I'll give you example, uh, you read second Corinthians chapter four, verse one, therefore since through God's mercy. We have this ministry, we do not lose heart, stop right there. Okay, and meditate, not gonna lose heart. Lord, I know you're with me. Just lead me to your people, lead me to the right people. I want them to share this ministry that you shared with me, I'm not gonna lose heart, just meditate. Rehearse it, look over the scripture again, take your time. It's, it's just like spiritually, you're eating the food and you're digesting it properly, you're not just eating in gulps. You know, that's bad for digestion. I remember my aunt would always tell me, you need to take your time, don't try to wolf the food down, just take your time. So just take your time in eating these scriptures and then you'll start to bond with the Holy Spirit and all of a sudden, I kid you not. Take his finger and point you to another scripture that's similar to this one. And you'll start making bridges and then you'll start to have a driver and a deeper understanding of what he's sharing with you. Okay, so again, let's celebrate our Lord and Savior's, uh, resurrection, say hallelujah. You know, we're no longer in fear of death. And it's just amazing, we, we have the victory. We have the victory. So if anybody had any questions, any, any concerns, I know that, uh, we wrapping up a little later than, uh, expected. Uh. Feel free to come to the table.
Okay, are there any questions, comments or concerns? Okay, well with that in mind, um. Yeah, someone's speaking? Okay. We wanna say absolutely hallelujah, because our Lord has risen. At the end of Luke, he died. When Jesus, our Lord died, remember, our sins were put on him. In the beautiful book of Leviticus, we learned that there were two goats. There was one goat, whose sin was placed upon him, then there was another goat where the sins were placed upon him. That goat was sent away. And that's in harmony with scripture was found in Psalms. As far as the east is from the west, so far has he put our sins away from us. So that goat that was sent away, he was sent away into the wilderness. Never to be retrieved, never to be found. And with him, he carried every block and every knot and every. Tok of our sins. So beloved, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. He died. He was buried. He was resurrected the third day. He ascended into heaven. He is now seated at the right hand of the Father, interceding on our behalf. Daily he intercedes on our behalf. We have cause for rejoicing. We have, we have cause for praise and we have cause for proclamation. Tell our family, friends, relatives. Please let those in our circle, neighbors, coworkers, strangers, associates. Um. The every so oft that we come into contact with. Please introduce them, welcome them to our Bible study. Or to a parallel faithful Bible study. But please, please beloved brethren. We're living. In the beginning. Of the last days. And like I always say, you know, people like to say, well, we don't know when the end's going to come. This is true. This is true. But don't play or live like you got forever. Because whether our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ returns tomorrow or two thousand tomorrows, know this, a hundred years from today, you won't be here. Okay, know this, that one hundred years from today, you won't be here. So that is equivalent to our Lord's return. So beloved brethren, please live for the Lord today. Please do not bank on, I got time. I got time, I got tomorrow, I got next week. It's not guaranteed. And let's just say God blesses you to live for another hundred years. He's already read your heart and your heart is saying, I don't really have time for Christ. And if I do live for another hundred years, I'm gonna live ninety-nine of those years to self and I'll give one year to Christ. It won't work like that. So beloved brethren, please live for God today as if he'll return tomorrow, as if he'll return today. Love him now. Practice on loving him now, practice on making him a part of your eternity now. Because beloved, remember, I just read to you at the opening of our study, there are angels that glorify God both day and night forevermore. Please know this. If you should make it into paradise, into heaven, if you should be able to escape the rash that is to come, you're gonna be glorifying Christ, glorifying God the Father. So like we 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 read in prayer, thy kingdom come, thy will be done. Well, his will is for us to glorify him both day and night forevermore. Are you gearing up for that? Those are questions for self-examination. Are you gearing up for glorifying, praising, and honoring him today, tomorrow, and throughout all eternity? So with that in mind, beloved brethren, we brought this beautiful study of Luke to a close. Thank you, Brother London. Next week, Saturday, we're gonna start uh the intro to Numbers, uh we're gonna try to get into chapters um. We're gonna try to um include in our intro of the book of Numbers, we're gonna try to um at least cover chapter one. So beloved, as London had um and uh sent the invitation, please read the scriptures in advance. Um don't let it overwhelm you. Man, I I I can't take this all in, this is too much and the reading and the wording is just too much. Read like Brother Leonard said a passage, for God so loved the world. Stop right there and meditate on that. Wow. You know the world that God loved, tha- that's you? Yeah, you are in the world. The scripture says, for all have sinned and come short of the glory of God. So that includes you. So you meditate on that. And eh you know, I I I I I um extend the invitation to you as well. Read portions of scriptures. You know, little bits of vegetables, a little bit of corn, a little bit of rice, little bit of green peas, a little bit of chickens, a little bit of fish. That's filling you. It's better to have a little bit of that than a whole lot of nothing. Because as you are eating and as you're increasing and as you're growing, the Lord will fill you with more and more and more. So bless the Father, bless the Son, bless the Holy Spirit. Continue to enjoy these studies. Get involved with a a faithful church or congregation. And beloved brethren, let today be the first day for you to bless the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. If there are no further comments, questions, or concerns, uh Brother London, can you bring us to a beautiful close?
Okay.
Oh, um Brother London, your niece, your niece wants to close us out in prayer.
Okay. Go on.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Please bless my family to stay safe and thank you for all blessings that we have. And please forgive each and one of us of our sin and shortcomings. And thank you for allowing us to finish Luke and please bless us to go over Numbers next Saturday. And please bless us to learn many more things about you and your word of the Bible. And please bless us to get a good night's sleep tonight. If we're going out, please bless us to be safe always. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.